Councilman Robert Stokes, Senior Chairman of Education, Workforce and Youth Committee. I'd like to introduce some of the committee members. Councilwoman Porter from the 10th District. Councilwoman Vice President Sharon Middleton from the 6th District. Trey Hayes, who is a committee staff person sitting here. From the mayor's office, we have Dwayne Adams. And virtually, we have Tiffany Macken from President Mosby's office. Today, we are just going to hold a hearing in terms of Baltimore City Children and Youth Fund to introduce two new members of the board. We also had a board chair, Larry Carlton Simmons, Jr. And also the president, Mrs. Lee. So, Mrs. Emily, will you be able to introduce the president? Thank you.
Absolutely. It's my pleasure. This is Alicia Lee, President of the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund. Thank you so much. Thank you for inviting BCYF to present our newest cohort of exemplary board members for your review. I'm Alicia Lee, the president of BCYF, and I'm pleased to introduce our board chair, Larry Simmons, Jr., and he'll present the 2023 BCYF Board of Directors cohort.
Thanks and good morning. The Baltimore Children and Youth Fund, as a quasi-public organization and as a part of our bylaws, are required to present any new board cohorts to the Baltimore City Council for approval. This hearing is the end of a six-month-long interview process. BCYF began with community recruitment with a public invitation to apply and/or nominate other Baltimore City leaders. Through this process, BCYF was fortunate to engage many Baltimore City citizens committed to youth development. Once recruitment concluded, all applicants went through an application review by current BCYF board members using an equitable rubric. Then applicants who scored high were invited to interview with BCYF board members who garnered applicants' commitment to BCYF values, including racial justice. Those applicants who had the highest average application and interview score were brought to the BCYF Board of Directors. On June 20th, 2023, the BCYF Board of Directors voted to approve the cohort before you today to join the board pending today's public hearing and city council approval. It is my great pleasure to introduce to you two, five incredible individuals, all committed to the BCYF mission and all leaders in their communities and Baltimore City. Britt Hayes. Britt is a dedicated communication professional with a passion for making a positive impact through nonprofit work, especially with organizations dedicated to social and environmental causes. I'm sorry, I should ask you all to stand when I say your name. My apologies. Thank you, Britt. Chanelle Williams Howard.
Chanelle will be here shortly.
She will? Okay, I'll move on to Nellie Power. Nellie is Chief Program Officer of the Maryland Family Network and is a lifelong Baltimore City resident who cares deeply about the local, political, and social landscape. Thank you. Tiara Hawks Esquire. Hey, Tiara. Tiara is a native of Baltimore and a juvenile defense attorney with the Maryland Office of the Public Defender and represents children under the age of 18 with genuine and instinctive passion for advocating for the most marginalized in our society. Thanks, Tiara. And Reverend's not here either, right? Okay. So, as you can see, BCYF is thrilled to have a cohort of passionate and skilled leaders join the team. I would now like to invite the council members to ask any questions you have before approving the newest cohort of BCYF.
Thank you, but I'd like to recognize Councilman Bullock from the 9th District, member of the committee, and Dominic McGally from Mayor Scott's office also.
Thank you.
So, that's your presentation?
That's the presentation.
So, we really gonna, I know they are current members, so we talk about the new two board members, aren't we correct?
These are the new five board members.
Five? Wow, okay. Okay, and Councilman Torrance, member of the committee, is on his way in from the 7th District. Okay, then we are up for some questions. If committee members, if you look at your package, you'll see all the members, new members of the board and their resumes, so if you want to look at that and start off with any questions. So, Councilman Bullock, Vice President Middleton or Torrance, do y'all have any questions for the board members? Well, I'll start off. To the new board members, Mrs. Britt Hayes, what inspired you to want to be on this Baltimore City Youth Fund program? Could you explain what reason why you're excited? I'm sure you are, but excited why you want to be a part of this and participate in our young people's activities and what we're going to do with them in terms of funding, programming, and all that? Could you explain to us why you think it's good stuff?
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Councilman. I have prepared a statement that really addresses the question that you're asking, so I'll go ahead and read that. I have carefully reviewed the mission, values, and objectives of the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund, and I am passionate about the important work that is being done in our community to not only ensure that our youth live, thrive, and lead, but to also address racial injustice, promote intergenerational leadership, and build community ownership. I believe that my skills and experiences align perfectly with the needs of BCYF as it continues to grow and address the critical challenges facing our city, and as a dedicated advocate for community engagement, youth empowerment, and most of all, creating opportunities for our city's young people to succeed, I am eager to contribute my time, energy, and expertise to help drive BCYF's success. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I know I said you two ladies, but it's five new members, so the same questions would go to the rest of them. So whoever want to be next?
Good morning, everyone. I think as a juvenile public defender, I often interact with youth when they are in trouble or when they need the help because they've been involved in some type of delinquent behavior. What I'm noticing is that there's something that's causing the delinquent behavior, and I think that there needs to be services, programs, activities that address those things before they're involved in a criminal justice system. And I just think that with my skill set and knowing and interacting with these kids, their families, Department of Juvenile Services, Department of Social Services, whoever's involved in their case, I can bring that wealth and knowledge to the Baltimore City Youth Fund and give insight on what these kids are actually needing and maybe try to prevent some of the crime that's happening with our juveniles and just assisting them in that way. So, I think it would be, it's important to me, and I think that I wanted to get more involved on the proactive side, more so than the reactive side.
Okay, whoever want to be next?
I think that'll be me. Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for having me. I think my interest in being a part of BCYF is informed by two main things. One is a love for Baltimore, and the other is for just a passion for children, youth, and families. I've worked with them my entire career. As a child, I knew I wanted to work with children, so it's just something that has been part of my core existence forever. I think the other thing that, I've lived in Baltimore City my entire life, over 50 years. I've worked in Baltimore City over 25 years, most of my career, and I don't think that you can live and work in Baltimore without seeing very visibly the structural inequities that surround us everywhere. And I'm really interested and excited by the mission of BCYF, which really makes central racial justice and addressing social inequities as part of their primary mission. So, I'm excited to be a part of that, be of service to that, and take that back to my work as a statewide grant maker and learn a lot from my experience. So, thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Can you also, when you're speaking, just state your name? So whoever's next is, make sure they state their name.
So, our other two members are Reverend Turner, Reverend...
Thank you so much. Our other two members are Reverend Robert Turner, and he's in transit. He is the pastor of Empowerment Temple. And the other member is Chanelle Williams Howard, who is a Baltimore City Public Schools employee. She's the fine arts coordinator there. They're both in transit, as you can imagine, both of those roles. They had a little bit of an emergency this morning, but they are in transit, so hopefully they can speak for themselves if they're able to get here in time.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to make a comment. I'm excited about funding for the persons that really do the work in the city, and sometimes they don't always get the funding. And I know this board look at it all the time because a lot of these nonprofits take money out their pocket. So, the idea of this youth fund that former mayor, Jack Young, created was given opportunities to those organizations who've been doing the work but seen they can't get the funding. So, I'm really excited about that still happening. So, we're going to move on to questions, I believe. Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is more for the, I guess, the board chair. Good to see you this morning. Forgive me if I missed this, if it was mentioned before I came in, but I think you've done a, there's a great job in terms of these new board members, very excited to see them. How did they come to you or how did you approach them? How did they come to be board members? I'm curious about that.
So, there was a call that we put out very publicly where folks were able to nominate themselves or nominate other community members. And through that process, there was an interview, there was an intro session where folks came out on Saturday morning to kind of meet us and to talk and to learn more about BCYF. After that, they were able to either pull their applications and say, no, I don't want to do it, or, you know, continue on in the process. And from that, there was an interview process that was split up between all of us current board members, and then there were some final decisions and then invitations.
Okay, and one, that's very encouraging. One follow-up too. How many applications did you receive? I mean, were you heading to sift out thousands or hundreds, or what are we talking about here?
No, actually, we would have loved to receive thousands, right? But we did not because within the last, this is our second round of seeking board members. I mean, many of us were part of the first round, which was the same public nominate your community leaders or nominate yourself process. I think that in a city like Baltimore where folks have not always had an opportunity to have their voices heard, people are slow to coming to spaces where folks are saying, come on, we want to hear you, we want to hear what you have to say. So hopefully, as we grow and as we move, our board becomes larger, people have more interest in being involved in the board, understanding the fact that, because I think that's what happens too sometimes, is that people want to apply, but then they also run organizations and don't want to, don't understand that there is an opportunity to still be a part of the board and still apply for funds.
Sorry. A couple of follow-ups. So, what's the size of the board now? What's your target size?
I can help. Is that helpful? Okay, got it, okay.
Right now, we're at about eight members. We have three youth seats that are filled. One of our young people is here today, and three of them are going to be rolling off in January, and we'll be doing another mass, you know, reach out for young board members as well.
And how long are the terms?
Three years.
Thank you.
So, before we go to the next questions, I think Mr. Dr. Robert Richard Allen Turner is here. Wow, what a name. The question is, why were you interested in being part of the Children and Youth Fund?
Thank you, first of all. Great honor to be here amongst all of you. When you think about the opportunity to make a transformational impact on our community, I'm greatly honored and humbled to be considered, and I see the work of BCYF as pivotal in making that impact, especially on the lives of our young people. And I feel that my participation in that, on this board, can greatly enhance that as well.
Thank you. Before we go to Councilwoman Porter, real quick, Vice President Middleton had a comment.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I would be remiss if I didn't also just make a comment about our former council president and then mayor, Jack Young. If he was here today and just see how this youth fund has really flourished, I know at the very beginning, there were some bumps in the road, and I give extra thanks to the director of the organization. Just when she became the director and just watched her leadership and how, you know, she just showed her expertise and how she can put together an organization, and it takes dedication and leadership, and you have just done an omen's job. And I thank you on behalf of the city, just by really shaping up and getting the Children's Youth Fund together, and then to just listen and have, how all of you have just showed your passion and how you're just ready to take off and really be a part of this. We all know there's a lot of work to do in this city, and, you know, it's just happy to see, look, all of you have basically smiles on your face this early in the morning, ready to get through this process and really get to work. And yesterday, we, you know, just did a really big milestone in creating a separate office for older adults, and that director will be at the, you know, the mayor, it'll be a cabinet-level position for the mayor. So, that's going to help our older adults that are in need as well, and I just envision a very strong intergenerational connection as we continue to move forward with your organization as well. So, please keep the council in tune with everything that you do. This fund is just so important, and I know that there were people out there watching thinking that this was probably not going to last long, but you have shown the complete opposite. So, we all really thank you, thank you, thank you for, our youth, they're in need right now, and we just can't thank you. And I just thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving me that opportunity, being a person that really kind of was there when all of this started. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Director or the board chair, I did have a question. I noticed, and I'm grateful that I see so many leadership participants within this cohort of board of directors. Can you speak to how you're going to leverage the entire network of the leadership class and also not just within the current class, but within previous classes, not just in the city of Baltimore, but throughout the state of Maryland? Thank you.
That's a great question. There's, I think there's a Leadership Baltimore event here at City Hall this evening, so that's apropos, but we do have three members here present in the room that are part of Leadership Baltimore. I'm a member of Leadership Baltimore, and then also our director of grant making, Charice Page, is a member of Leadership Baltimore. And, you know, it's such a resource to the city to have GBC pulling together folks who are passionate about civic engagement, so it's no surprise that there were lots of nominated folks in that pool. And so, we were lucky then to be able to have that network of people to be able to say, oh, you know what? I was nominated. If you get nominated, you get an email saying someone nominated you, and then, you know, we're able to have that personal connection. So, we would love to explore ways that we can utilize the full network, because as we know, there's folks all across the state of Maryland where Baltimore is home in their hearts, even if they're not here physically.
And the reason why I asked that question is much more, you know, all the hearings that we've talked about, I've really centered on sustainability and sustainable models, particularly for this group. More importantly, there's an opportunity for our business leaders in the city of Baltimore to actively take a social conscious and social enterprising role. And just for the public, this is a model for other nonprofits and other collaboratives of groups in the city of Baltimore to actually replicate this. This is a model that works, and this is a model that has worked, and just want to congratulate you all for your tenure, and I look forward to the great work that you are going to do on behalf of the youth of Baltimore.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to recognize Councilman Cohen, member of the committee from the 1st District, but I want to switch because we had some new board members come in, and the question is, why were you interested in serving on the Children and Youth Board? So, before you, you can push the button on the right-hand side, whoever's speaking, but state your name first.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Chanelle Howard. I have the pleasure of serving right now as the coordinator of Fine Arts for Baltimore City Public Schools. And so, when you ask me, why BCYF? Why not? It definitely aligns with all of the work that I already do in terms of making sure that our students have voice as well as access across the city. So, it is my esteemed pleasure, it's my honor to serve on this committee. But if you want me to go longer, let me know. I can probably speak the next two and a half hours just doing that, but I thought it would be appropriate to keep it brief. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Brandon. I actually work at BCYF. I'm the director of Strategic and Philanthropic Partnerships.
Okay, thank you. But real quick, I just have a question. Do you work closely with the youth commission?
Not at this time. Yeah, I think there's a lot of synergy, so we'd love to connect.
And Ms. Nia Redman from East Baltimore, she created Grandparents Day. I think maybe we need to talk more about speaking with her, how we can incorporate the grandparents with our young people, because a lot of our young people, their grandparents are raising them right now. So, I wanted to make sure you get that information before Ms. Nia Redman's email, and you can kind of talk to how...
That's one of, she's one of our 2022 grantees, so she's in our cohort, and I can reach out to her today and set up time to talk about it. That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Cohen?
Hey, Mr. Chair. Thank you all for the work you're doing and for being here with us today, and apologies for my tardiness, dealing with my own youth. Had to late drop off at school and a doctor's appointment, so I'm sorry for being late. I think it's been brought up now twice. I know the vice president mentioned, and the chairman as well, just this idea of intergenerational work and Baltimore being such a base, just like Councilman Stokes said, for older adults playing that role as not only sort of guardian and caretaker of their own immediate children, but grandkids as well. And knowing that programs like Experience Corps, which put older adults into schools, programs like what Councilman Stokes mentioned, that Nia does on the East Side, there's just an enormous amount of value in strengthening those bonds and relationships. As I think the vice president mentioned just yesterday, we reestablished the Office of Aging as a cabinet-level office. And so, I wonder, from a strategic funding standpoint, because I do remember Vice President Milton, in the original legislation, I believe then-President Jack Young had a piece about intergenerational work. Is there any thought, or could there be, funding strategically allocated to support intergenerational work? Because I think it's happening in our city, but it's either underfunded or unfunded, and the quick example I'll give is Experience Corps, which almost left Baltimore, and were it not for the advocacy of several of the elders, would have left the city. I think it's just a gap that, as, from a funding perspective, I know we have some foundations that are thinking about it, but could the youth fund play more of a direct role in this space?
Thank you so much, Councilman. That's a great question, and actually, that idea of intergenerational leadership or collaboration is throughout the organization at the top level as one of our values, and at the second level, as one of the community-contrived or community-created priority areas for funding. So, I think you'll see this year, when we, you can look out in a few weeks for lots of marketing and advertising to help us find the folks who will get the next $3 million of investment at the grassroots fund level. Of course, we'll share all that information with you, but you'll find that we'll be looking specifically for work that is a part of that networked work where we're really emphasizing intergenerational leadership. So, our grant priorities aren't set by us, they're set by the community, and you all have your finger, of course, on the pulse of the community, so you know that that intergenerational piece is critical, and it's represented in our grant-making priorities.
I think it would be great, as we stand up this Office of Aging, for you all to be in direct relationship with them, as well as the, of course, Youth and Children Family Office as well. Last question from me, and apologies if anyone said this before, but we know we have some real challenges around young people with guns right now and some of the violence that we have experienced inside, outside of our schools, in our neighborhoods, that unfortunately, younger and younger kids are getting access to firearms and, in some cases, using them. And so, I wonder, from the youth fund's perspective, have you all been thinking about strategically supporting restorative practices, work that is inherently anti-violent by nature, peer-to-peer work? I'm just curious whether this issue of youth violence is, I assume it is coming up, because I know it comes up for all of us in most conversations that we have, and so I wonder, is there an effort, an explicit effort to reduce the violence that our kids are exposed to right now?
Yes, absolutely. I would say that's at the forefront, especially of our board members and, of course, our staff's mind. It's one of the prevailing issues when we talk to young people directly, and of course, when we talk to the organizations that serve them. The executive committee has made a decision that the Grassroots Fund, which currently right now has a portfolio, 91% of the organizations are black-led, these are organizations that are with budgets of $350,000 and below, folks who've been doing the work often out of their own pockets, things like that. 25% of the funding this year will be dedicated to folks who are working with, as youth violence interrupters in some way. We're working to define what that means, because as we know, youth violence prevention happens in lots of different ways, but we're looking to build a more cohesive professional learning community around some of the best practices of some of the folks who are doing the work. I'm thinking right now about Let's Thrive Baltimore, Heart Smiles, folks who really are using youth voice and choice and advocacy to help, as a youth prevention, youth violence prevention tool. So, you'll start to see that as that portfolio rolls out and requests, so that 25% will be allocated specifically for that. Then in the winter, you'll see our professional learning, the Learning Lab program, which is a six-month professional learning that involves uplifting and amplifying the wisdom of the portfolio, the grants portfolio, and also partnering that with community wisdom. You're going to see lots of opportunities for us to have really great conversations with advocates like all of you and also with practitioners, so that we can also come up with some solutions. We know the folks that are closest to the problem have the solution, so we want to amplify their voice. That's one way that we're really being strategic about youth violence prevention. And I'll just throw in, when you mentioned restorative practice, restorative justice practices, our team and staff has embarked on a year-long journey around restorative justice work. We all aim to be well-versed in that Indigenous and Black wisdom tool of conflict resolution. We'll be sharing that information back out with our grantees. We really, really think of like the 101 organizations that are our grantees as the heart of the city. You know, these are folks who are working directly with young people in really meaningful, impactful ways, so we're looking to share that wisdom as well, directly from the Baltimore Restorative Justice Coalition, which is right here in Baltimore City. So, we're thinking about restorative justice in ways that it can be a part of organizational structure and ways that it also then can trickle down in terms of the way it operates on the ground as well. So, both of those pieces are ways that we're thinking about that work.
I appreciate that. Just to close out, I think that there is going to be a push at the state level for some legislation specifically around restorative practices for our schools. I know that it's a conversation on the Trauma-Informed Care Task Force, we've been having a lot, is just how do we institutionalize or create an ecosystem where we are both restorative, trauma-responsive, like we're really digging deep into some of the, you know, opportunities that I think we have as a city, and there's great work already happening. So, love to hear that you are going to fund it and also that you be part of that advocacy as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Real quick, before... Real quick, before I get to Councilman Bullock, I know I mentioned, Youth Commission also mentioned Mrs. Nia Redman, her grandparents' day. Have you all ever talked to anybody in Wreckin' Parks? Because they kind of have the infrastructure there already. And a lot of organizations probably could bring their program into our rec centers. Because a lot of them, some are working out their house. I mean, it's normal, but you all had a conversation with Director Moore and see how some of the youth programs, maybe they can do an MOU with some of these rec centers. Because we have to put the right kind of program in our rec centers for our young people to come in there. And I always say, when young people feel like they got to go down to Harbor to have a good time, you know how many rec centers they walk past? Because we need to create the kind of programs that they want, not what we want. Because our rec centers, our young people should not be walking past rec centers. Everybody don't play football, everybody don't want to play basketball. So we have to have other programs in there. And I think talking with Wreckin' Parks, who already had the infrastructure, and maybe some of those groups who get funding, maybe they can do a MOU with Wreckin' Parks, so they at least have some space. But there'd be the right kind of program in the neighborhoods that we is needed. So I just wanted to share that with you also. And I'm going to go over to Councilman Bullock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Little question I have, you mentioned grantees. I'm thinking about the grant application process and then folks who are not awarded grants. Is there any communication with them as to why they didn't receive funds and how they can improve their applications?
Yes, absolutely. So grantees, I just want to start by saying, the beginning of the process is we offer over 100 hours of free one-on-one technical assistance. So you, before you even submit your application, you know, a member of our team can meet with you, go through your application and help you to amplify your application. After the process, if you are declined, we do encourage folks to reach out to us. Actually, our director of grant making has a meeting this week with the grantee, where she's reviewed their application, the comments from community, and we'll offer that feedback in lifetime. So if you have any folks in your communities that need that feedback, please just have them reach out to us and we continue to communicate that as well.
No, thank you, that's helpful. As, thinking about something that the chairman mentioned about recreation, folks know I'm a sports fitness guy, and I'm thinking about, I'm an organization that did apply, not pleading their case here, but Southwest Sports and Fitness Alliance, they do work in both the ninth and attempt district. What's been communicated to me is that they applied, I know, both in 2002, 2003, they did take advantage of technical assistance. But this point, they're still trying to figure out as to why their application was denied. They mentioned sending emails and, and making phone calls. So if somebody can get back to them, that'd be helpful too.
I'll call them today. Yeah. If they emailed and called us and we haven't responded, I'll give them a call today.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for advocating for them.
Council Vice President?
Thank you. Just to kind of piggyback on some things that I just heard, I know I get a lot of calls from nonprofits that do things with youth and communities. And one of their biggest problems is finding space, permanent space, because they seem to be, they jump around in different areas of the neighborhood and really don't have a place they can call their own to really grow as an organization. Do you work with that as well?
I don't want to give too much away around the plan, but I'll just say that, that, beside, after funding, space is of course, like the second primary concern. We are taking Councilman Stokes' strategy that he shared around parks and rec as being that first line of space that's available in the community. And then the second piece is, we're putting together a committee this winter to help us explore where B C Y F's permanent home will be. And a part of that vision is that there will be programmatic space inside of our building that grantees can then be granted out to use, both for administrative pieces, because as Councilman Stokes shared, like lots of folks are working in their homes, having team meetings at their homes. So being able to offer, you know, meeting space and also workspace, but then also spaces where young people can come for programming as well. So, but we do want to exhaust first the parks and rec space, because that's space that's available. And parks and recs have been really a great partner. I just got promoted to be on their equity strategic planning task force. So we're in constant communication about what the needs of our grantees are and what some of their needs are. And there's a lot of synergy as that being a first base resource. So, but even that, there's so many programs, parks and rec can't fill all, right? And so we are thinking about and dreaming of a B C Y F office that also holds space for, for folks for programming.
So, and then to add to that, with Wreckin' Parks, everyone knows where C.C. Jackson is and the campus and the process it took and the partnerships. The Cow Ripken Foundation or Raven Foundation did the big field. And then, of course, you know, it was other money that helped really renovate and add to that building. But also, on that campus is where the new Pratt Library is going to be, first new library in over 17 years. But remember, all of our libraries service everyone in Baltimore, even though we have them spread out. But this library is going to be unique because it's sitting on the campus of, you know, Wreckin' Parks. And then right across the street are, and they're living in them now, senior housing. And more housing is going to be developed around that camp. So they're creating a kind of system that, you know, is intergenera, it's, everything is in play right there. I don't know if you, and then a little bit down the street is the San Kofa Children's Museum. So, which is one of its kind museums, by the way, in the entire country.
Yeah, one of our favorites.
So, awesome, awesome. And I know that they have received funding also from, you know, the city to help with their operations and so on. And there are some other organizations that are connecting with them to help the schools in that, the children in that area to go to that museum. Because sometimes we have communities with these wonderful things, but the, you know, if you don't introduce this stuff to the children at the schools there and get them acclimated, they're not going to go there. So I'm putting, I'm putting together an organization now to help that with Pimlico Elementary Middle. So, and then lastly, I don't know if you all know Chu Smith, the former Globetrotter, and he's been doing work with you for the last 20 years, you know, through sports and so on, particularly in East Baltimore. But he now has officially acquired the old Greenspring School and is very, supported by the five surrounding communities. And he's calling that, and you can go on his website and look at everything, but he's calling that, that's going to be a communiversity center, basically, mainly for youth. And he will have that whole entire campus. And there are some other long-term goals for that campus as well. So that's also a good connect, because he's going to be servicing the whole entire city with the work that he does through sports. He is presently the president of the M B A Retirement Association. So he will bring a lot of his colleagues in the M B A are waiting to do work here as well. So I encourage that connect and can make that happen. Okay. I'm finished. Thank you.
Councilwoman Porter. No questions from the committee anymore? Council, Councilman Cohen?
Hey, Mr. Chair. Just one quickie that was really important to me and I think to my colleagues when we were doing the original youth fund bill. How many young people are actually on the board right now? And what does it look like, the process of onboarding and supporting them to be full members of the youth fund?
We have, that's a great question. We have three youth board members. Our bylaws require us to make every effort to have one-third of the board be comprised of young people. Part of that is the Avis Ransom Institute, which is a leadership program that's also a part of our bylaws, that serves as a board leadership pipeline. We are working diligently as a team, both to make a staff hire, to support that program internally, and also to just revitalize the program and reshape it, so that it can reach more young people. So I think in year one, prior to me coming, there were five young people, I think, that were engaged in the program. Our vision for the program going forward is more in the realms of 25 to 30 young people there. And we see it as an opportunity to build a leadership pipeline for B C Y F, but also for other entities and other youth leadership opportunities in the city. So that's, that's where the program is now. It's in a reimagining stage, so that we can get it lifted off the ground with a bit different set of vision and, and metrics to guide the work.
Great. Please keep us up to date. I'm sorry.
We have, we currently have three young people that are on the board. One is actually here with us today, Lewis. And those young people will be rolling off in January, and the new young people will be rolling back on.
All right. Appreciate that. Please keep us up to date on that. And if you could, just a request, maybe for the committee would be, when that RFP around the intergenerational funding comes out, if you could let us know, so that we can share it and kind of push it out into the ether, that would be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. You, one of your youth fund members, can you introduce yourself, since he came all the way down here?
Absolutely. Peace. My name is Lewis Williams III. I am one of the youth board members on the B C Y F board. Anything else you wanted to know?
No. Tell, tell us about what you'd like to see in terms of you being on, the younger person on the youth, children's youth on board, something that you would like to see, you can accomplish, and drawing more of our young people into the different kinds of programs that y'all fund also.
Absolutely. I have to start off by saying that the only reason I'm sitting in this chair right now because I was mentored by very dope people in the city who even brought this opportunity to my doorstep. So my big thing on rolling off soon is making sure there's a legacy of young people who are confident, capable, and ready to hold up the mantle of what it looks like to control power in the city. Because there are many people who tell youth that their voices don't matter and that they don't get to make decisions until they're older, until they're wiser and all that. Not taking into consideration, there's a lot of wisdom and knowledge that young people just innately have by just the experiences that they have when they're younger. So my big thing is, again, making sure before I roll off, I can look some young folk in their eyes and say, y'all got this? If you need support, call me, but y'all can do, y'all have everything y'all need to be successful. So that's what, like I said, I want to leave on.
Thank you. Real quick, before we go to public testimony, have, we have Charm TV. And a lot of the funding that y'all do for some of these programs, I don't know if Charm TV actually go interview them. I think that's something we need to use Charm TV to go to all those programs that have been funded and put that on television and let them know what they're doing. Because a lot of times, people, you give out the money, people don't know actually who's doing what. And you might see some young people, the parents on there might want to put their kids in some of the programs. So I think we need to use Charm TV as a way of getting the word out in terms of those nonprofits who receive funding, and so they can see what they're actually doing. Because it could be something right in somebody's neighborhood, but they know it's there. So, you know. Yeah, so use that platform, it's there. So we have no public testimony, Trey?
I know.
Okay. Any call-ins? Okay. Well, we don't have no call-ins, so what I wanted to just say is, thank you guys for being committed, and women, men and women, for being committed to youth fund. I mean, you could be doing something else, but everybody working together can really help our young people in this city and helping our nonprofits, again, who don't always get the funding. And I'm glad you talked about you on the equity piece with Wreckin' Parks, because that means a lot to me. I keep hearing that word, but I want to see some action. You know, we throw that word around, it's a nice buzzword, it sounds good. But when we talk about a majority black city, we got to do a lot to show for our young people, the funding, but we got to implement the equity. Again, and my colleagues know I say this all the time, I'm sick of hearing it. I want to see some action with equity in this city for, not just for our young people, equity period. So I'm glad to see that you on Wreckin' Parks, but I'm glad that the youth fund will be looking at that also in terms of how we distribute our money. And my colleague talked about some of the organizations that didn't get funding, I get the emails too. So I'm glad you want to call them back and tell them what they did. So they can next, brown, they'll be able to get the funding that they use. So I don't know if my colleagues want to say anything before we recess. Again, thank you for your commitment, you're doing a great job. Too bad we are not on the news, talking about all the great things that y'all are doing and all the nonprofits. So the first part is Charm 25, Champs 25. So thank you, and this meeting is in recess. Thank you.